All right, welcome everybody to our regular meeting for the City Council of City of Perry, February 20th, 2024. This call is meeting in order and have roll call.
Coffee.
Here.
White. Marshall.
Here.
Davis. Hold on.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. All right, we've got corn. And today we've invited Keegan to offer invocation.
I'll break that real quick. Dear God, I thank you for those gathered around today as you just continue just to lead in their lives and give them wisdom on the decisions they make and just I thank you for each one of them the time that they've given here. Amen.
Thank you. So real quick, Keegan, how are things going?
Pretty good at church. It's incredible. We keep seeing new faces that want to come. And between me and Ronnie, I mean, we get texts all the time of, hey, I'm gonna come to church this week. Most of the time I then text Ronnie, go, hey, whose number is this? But we've had in the last two weeks, four people give their life to Christ. So it's great just seeing the impact. Plus, we've now been able to start kind of our Friday ministry hub where Ronnie and I are out on the town going, hey, what do you need? What can we help with? Got a chance to go to the nursing home two weeks ago. And just hang out and just to see the joy among them of, wow, somebody's just here. And so we're building partnerships with others in town of going, let's start doing more in town. So have a great team behind us that continue to go, we'll take care of it for you. We'll help you with that. We'll step up. So it's going incredibly well.
Awesome. Yeah, awesome. Yeah. Thanks for everything you're doing in our community. We appreciate you. All right. So let's begin with our consent agenda. Second. Okay. Motion and second. Roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Rob.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. Don't believe we have any. So item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. We do have proclamation. Today is Christie's birthday.
Twenty-one.
And twenty-one, twenty-one always, always forever. As well as Chief Brian Thomas, your birthday was yesterday.
Yes, sir.
You twenty-one as well?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. All right. A little bit above there.
More mature.
Not really.
All right. Aside from that, we don't believe we have any proclamation, commendations. So council reports, Ward one. You guys got anything for us?
I don't have anything.
I had one of our constituents called today and he had saw the legal notice of the new law regarding riding lawn mowers to the grocery store, et cetera. And he said that he always tries to keep up with the council, but he missed then that coming on our agenda. And didn't remember reading anything about it, but he was a little upset about it. He said that he has a dear friend who's nine years old with very little money and a veteran who rides his lawn mower to get groceries and he couldn't afford a car. And he said, we're a town of forty-five hundred people and such a small amount of people, even if there were twenty, their percentage is so small, it's not worth it to penalize people who can't afford a vehicle, et cetera. And if it's drug users that can't drive or whatever that we're concerned about, then what they're doing wrong, you need to make them pay, but not penalize the others. He said deal with the drug abusers. He thinks we already have laws on the books that would have taken care of what needs to be taken care of in these situations. And he said, use the laws we already have, not create new ones. He kind of mentioned the police, the hang around bars, try to get people that are leaving drunk or driving drunk. But he had never seen anybody get stopped for walking down the middle of Sixth Street at night in dark clothing. And he had never seen anyone stop them and get onto them when you almost hit them. And I have seen that too on Sixth Street. But and he says, why did we want to penalize everyone else for one or two abuses of the law? They need help. And he said, we should be asking ourselves, what can we do to help those people? So I told him, he said he didn't mind coming and voicing it, but I told him I would make sure his voice was heard.
Thank you for that, Brian. All right, Ward two, what curses and jokes?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Ward three.
I don't know that I had anything specific. I had several people though that have come up to me since the previous meeting with concerns about water and the condition of the water system. And didn't really have any specific questions, but they just saw enough or heard enough at the last meeting that I think we definitely have got concern.
Eric. Okay. All right. As far as committees, I think Granger's is still too wet.
I've seen, I haven't heard whether they've gotten out there.
I haven't heard.
Matt's here. Do you know if they've done any of the digging out on the tower addition?
I have not been. I know it's been wet.
I know you've been kind of busy with some other stuff, but.
All right. Hospital.
I think this last meeting was canceled as well. They're still working on some documents for for the construction managers. So that's all we got.
Okay. Where's the last time, were they at ninety percent yet? Not yet?
I think that's the, they're still working towards those ninety percent documents.
Gotcha.
Yeah. They're getting into the finer details. So I think they're real close, but I don't think they're quite there. But we didn't have an update this week, so.
Right. Okay. And planning, zoning.
We had a meeting today.
We did.
Oh, all right. How'd that go?
Very productive.
Very productive.
To the point that we went over so much stuff, I can't even remember what was going on.
Still talking about the overlay district. Bryce, help me with the date. She said, or historic reservation would probably have something we could bring in the next month.
Planning commission in April, excuse me, in March, and then the overlay district in April to their planning commission. So this, this month is the marijuana restriction, next month would be the historic preservation ordinance, and the next month would be the overlay district.
We're meeting about every two weeks unless something comes up.
Right. And the marijuana one we gave ourselves until May?
March.
March. March. No, till May.
May.
To get that completed.
That'll be a good plan by the end of the month.
Good deal. All right. Anything else to bring forward? All right. Our birthday girl, I have number six.
Well, Matt was just telling me today that the, we are just about fully functioning with all valves now. Everything's been replaced, worked on. They programmed them today, I believe. That was the great news. Me and Lawrence will be meeting with the sixth grade STEM class for some tours at the water plant tomorrow. And that's all I can really come up with at this very moment because I really didn't even plan this out this week. So usually I have a little notebook full of stuff, but this one I did not. But it's been kind of very crazy and busy lately.
Yeah, with that for tomorrow. So Amanda Wilson reached out and she said that the STEM class, actually with all the things that happened with the water situation that we had, it piqued their interest to learn more about water, yeah, filtration and treatment and water plants. And so they reached out and asked if they could have a tour. And so it was interesting to see the students take an interest in something that happened in Perry that we had to deal with. So we're doing that tomorrow, tomorrow morning. All right. Item number seven, our CFO.
All right, January financials. Total cash, we've got about $7.9 million sitting in unrestricted cash. We're down about a percent and a half than this time last month. And the biggest change happened ever in our facilities authority. Facilities authority, you all know, is what we've set up, a separate trust to take care of hospital financing and improvements in that direction. So outflow of cash of about $473,000 to the facilities authority. Otherwise, when we look at cash this year compared to last year, we have a nice little healthy cushion because of the amount of grants that we've received, the OWRB loan and a couple of other things. So it's a good cash position right now, which we need because when you look over at our general fund itself, we should be at fifty-eight percent of budget. And you'll see year to date, we are at a loss of $25,000. So I would consider that a break even at this point. As much money that flows through here, a $25,000 loss is really not something to get overly concerned about. But something we do need to monitor is sales tax, down ten percent year to date. Use tax down forty-five percent to date. In total, that's down about nineteen percent. Numbers are big. And when you look at it in dollar factors, even seems larger. That's about $194,000 in sales tax, about $262,000 in use tax. So almost a half a million dollars in our standard taxes, our use tax and our, and sales tax that come through when we compare this year until last year. So something we're watching, you know, we budget it conservatively on those things. Also with use tax specifically, most of that was related to the improvements that went out by I-35, Building of Loves and things like that. So we knew that going into this year that we probably wouldn't see that same revenue generation. But something to watch. And positive things in the month of January, we did get our quarterly franchise taxes, which was a nice little boost. We received $130,000 from the loss on trust related to the ambulance and made a couple of quarterly payments that always come, you know, typically in that January timeframe. So other than that, January looked pretty good, other than the sales tax, which is a big deal. So on the municipal authority side, nothing super.
Before you go on, that's a sizable drop in sales tax.
Yes.
Can we make any assumptions on what's, what segments are down?
So that's a year to date. That's a year to date number that I gave you. We can run the standard industry code report. It has not come out for January as of today. And it usually comes out around the twentieth. So what's that been a couple of days? Oh, that's today. Sorry. I didn't check it today. But we can run the industry report, compare and see what's happened. And we can drill down by business, but that's confidential information. So, but yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Municipal authority, nothing outstanding, nothing significant happened in the month of January. And we are at about fifty-eight percent of budget and most of our revenue sources. When you look at sewer, sewer revenue looks really high, ninety percent of budget. That includes a $287,000 bond draw. I don't know if I've ever told you all that before, but that's sitting in operating revenue. I actually, if I'm going to present these financials, I like to see it separate because I think it kind of skews our margins a little bit, but I want to make sure you all are aware of that. And if you pull that bond draw out and you look at just our operating revenues for sewer, we're at sixty percent. We should be at fifty-eight percent. So we're right on target. So. And that's your January financials.
Question? Do you have any other questions? Thank you, Meredith. Item number eight. Consider approval of ordinance number 2024-07 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, providing for the amendment of Chapter 11 of the Perry Municipal Code 2022 by the amendment of section 11-306 entitled Duck Blind Regulations, providing for first come, first served duck blind permits, limiting the number of duck blind permits any person can purchase and providing for the addition and deletion of certain miscellaneous duck blind regulations. Providing for the amendment of Chapter 18 of the Perry Municipal Code 2022 by the amendment of section 11-308 subsection four, by increasing seasonal hunting permits from $12 to $20, providing for repealer, saving, codification, severability, penalty, and declaring emergency.
Patty came to me, I can't talk. Patty came to me a while back and said that she and Stephen Paul had been, he's the game ward, had been talking about changing some things on the duck blinds and how it's done. We have had a list, a very large list of people on standby that want a duck blind and are not getting that opportunity. We have some that buy five at a time and they might use two. In order to keep it a little more competitive, bringing it to first come, first served. We'll open it up, but a certain, you know, fifteen days before, calling it your blind. And you go pick it out. And Patty, do you want to elaborate any on that?
I can.
I was gonna say, this is, this is over at Lake Perry.
This is at Perry Lake.
I had no idea that there were duck blinds around Perry Lake that we rent out.
I had a call about duck blinds too. I called her. So. Right now we only have sixteen. It's been the same guys for years and years and years and years and years using the same duck blinds. And like she said, I have a list of people that want to use the duck blinds, but it's been the same every year. So I just want to kind of make it more fair for people that are closer to Perry. They're, not that my old guys can't, you know, come get a duck blind as too, but I just want to make it more fair. Stephen and I had sat down and looked at the map of Perry Lake and he actually thinks we can create more duck blinds, possibly twenty to twenty-five total. And that's not a for sure number right now. But he said that we could go out on the boat. And he could get out of the boat and go stake it and make more duck blinds. So he suggested, well, he thought this would be a better idea than coming up with a drawing every year like the other lakes do. I do have a guy that buys five blinds. And that's, I don't think that's fair considering now the list of people that want a duck blind. So we would have say there's twenty, we create twenty, there's twenty blinds. Send out a letter to the ones that have used it in the past, let them know that things are changing. This is the new rules. And start selling them a month before duck blind season starts. Once the twenty of them are sold, that's it for the year. And then they wouldn't be assigned a specific location that could go out to any of the duck blinds that are out there. As long as, you know, first come, first served. Hopefully we can all be adults about it and oh, somebody's on that duck blind, I'm gonna go to this duck blind. So it's just, I want to try to make it more fair and more easier. I'm not trying to create a lot of problems or for me or for any of the other duck blinds. Cause duck hunting is a very serious business. I did not realize how serious it was to kill a duck. Serious business. Any questions?
Yeah. So when you talk about a duck, it's really just an area staked off for a duck blind.
Right. We're gonna go out and stake with T post and then number them like one through twenty. And then, so twenties. But I know in the previous ordinance, it said that they could leave their duck blind stuff out there. Don't ask me what's entailed. I don't really know. But they would have to be understanding that either you can leave it out there and understand that somebody else could use that if you're not there, or you'd have to pack your stuff up at the end of your day or however they do it and take it with them.
And what do we charge for that space for a season?
A duck blind is forty and then we charge twenty dollars for a seasonal hunt.
Twelve dollars right now. We want to.
Well. I've been here ten years and we've always charged twenty.
Oh, okay. I thought it was.
So this is just correcting.
This is correcting.
Yeah, the code says twelve.
Okay. But we've done twenty. Gotcha.
And I just saw that it was twelve, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. So I didn't realize that.
Gotcha.
Stephen was gonna come, but he had father duties to attend to.
Not picking on you, Bryce, but the first time I read it, I thought we were permitting ducks to blink.
I don't think they should blink during hunting season. But we want to, I want to limit the amount, you know, you can only purchase two, I think two is more than enough.
Do we know what other places charge or have we?
It's, I don't know what they charge. I should look for that. I know everybody does the drawing. We have people, a lot of people from, well, most of our guys are not local as opposed to, except for the city people that have blind, but other than that, they're not around Perry.
To me, if we've got people driving in, we're not charging enough.
They're coming from Tulsa.
I think it needs to be a hundred. Raise it to the point where we don't have a waiting list.
Hey, we actually have a duck blind expert here.
Yeah, Matt, the code.
Matt, Matt, would you come forward?
I didn't realize your professionalism.
He's kind of a duck.
How much are duck, duck blinds usually, like your spot?
It depends on how good the spot is. The, you mean, the right duck spot. At least for duck hunting, somebody might pay upwards of thousands of dollars to be able to hunt on the right spot.
Well, we have the best.
I mean, there's different ways to go about this too. Perhaps a drawing for duck blinds, you know, where you just randomly. But if you want to take part in the, in the draw, maybe you pay X amount of dollars to be part of that, that draw process and that's your blind for the year. Because some people do pretty nice things at their duck blinds, you know, maybe cook breakfast, have, you know, set up lots of decoys, lots of stuff to pack in and out. I think if you're going to do it as a first come, first served basis, you need to set, lay some ground rules for what time can a person launch a boat because there's gonna be fights. There's gonna, it's gonna be a race. People are gonna get mad. It's gonna be, there's gonna be fights. Duck hunters can be rather crazy. You know, I mean, people on public hunting grounds. You'll see people camp on a boat ramp for two weeks ahead of duck season in some areas just so they can get out there for the first spot on public land. So.
It's not like that here.
But could we get it there?
Well, the way, the way the lake is right now, as low as it is, it's kind of, I found out the beginning of this year, the person that had purchased the five duck blinds didn't even show up last year because the lake is so low. So I think once the dam project, if that's still something that's on the table. And you know, the lake fills back up, I'm sure the duck hunting will become more.
But are these permanent blinds too? Are these permanent blinds on the whole line?
He's gonna come out and, kind of like Sooner Lake, you know, I guess they have it measured. Cause it, I guess it's a serious, it's a serious sport. I didn't realize how serious it was. But he said he'd come out and measure according to like Sooner Lake is right now.
Typically two hundred yards apart from your box. And that's kind of far enough away where the shot loses enough velocity that no one's gonna get injured seriously.
Cause I did ask them to cross.
So you don't want them right on top of one another because duck loads are serious loads. They're quite powerful. So he wants some spacing between them and, you know, but maybe a draw or something. I mean, to, to just assign blinds for the year and then, you know, make it where any, whoever wants an opportunity has an opportunity at those blinds. And a draw would be a fair way to do it. And then you could still charge whatever fee you determine is, is, is fair for the whole, it's for the whole season, you know, duck season lasts, you know, in November, all the way into the end of January. Well, dew season goes out in February. So it's for several months. It's, you know, twenty dollars is pretty light in my opinion.
Yeah. See, I mean, I didn't even know that we had duck blinds out there and that we were renting them. And this is an opportunity.
It's not the actual blind. It's just.
No, a spot. Yeah, yeah.
So if somebody's gonna spend money building a blind, they may spend, you know, several hundred dollars to put a blind in there. You know, and they may not want somebody coming in there that's not gonna respect the improvements they made for duck season too. So.
I see this as an opportunity that we can, you know, promote something in Perry. I mean, we've got a new website. We can put, if we can get to where people can reserve their spot, you know, online and the guys, you know, from Tulsa can do that through the Perry website. And I mean, if some duck blinds, you know, hunting spots can go upwards to a thousand bucks. And it's a pretty good little, you know, revenue stream there where we're only getting twelve dollars. That's a big jump, big difference. I mean, for the Parks Department, for you to bring in a thousand dollars of duck blind.
Is that gonna go back in my budget?
Yeah.
That was before I even got it all the way out of my mouth. Nope.
We're gonna fix a water line with it.
But I mean, that's, that's a big jump from twenty dollars to, you know.
We'll, otherwise you're gonna.
I don't know that we could do a thousand, but we can. I don't know that we can do a thousand, but, you know.
I think they got one or a couple hundred, I think they did four or five hundred, and they had like eight or nine duck blinds on Liberty Lake, and then it was just a draw. And if you draw out, you got to pick your blind, and, and then you just pay for the season, and it was yours for the season. And then at the end of the season, you would remove your blind, and the next season, they would do it again.
Sounds like a better way to do it. Yeah, so, so we would recommend that this be continued, and we'll consult with our duck blind expert and, and bring you something back that, that perhaps works better.
How, how many are on the waitlist?
I have probably six people that I know that have called through the years. Over the years, I told, I just put them on the list, I was always just told to put them on the list, so. I'm just trying to make it more fair, I'm not trying to create a whole lot, I'm not trying to upset my current duck hunters. I still want them to be able to utilize the lake, but, I think there needs to be more of a system put in place. Whatever that system may be, I just want it fair.
Yeah, this idea of an auction where they bid, and if you bid the most, you get your pick. You know, and so that that is your blinds, so there's not the fights, and you can go put your stuff out there. I mean, it just makes a whole lot more sense when these guys are armed, you know. I mean, it, it does, that makes, and then, you know, the second person can pick theirs, and.
All right. Should we table this then, till the next one to fix that?
Yeah, I think so.
I, I don't know that I personally would support an auction, because, because then it truly does lend to just the guy with the most money. I, I think I'd rather see us pay kind of a, charge a prevailing rate, and then that would be a lottery.
Okay.
And give a lottery, X amount of dollars, you get the spot.
There, three hundred and fifty or five hundred dollars, or whatever it is. Because it's, finding a place to hunt duck is hard.
Yeah, and there's gonna be one spot on the lake that's gonna be better than anything, you know. And then, and then everything else, the wind has to be right, you know. So, some of those blinds might not be worth as much, but at least you let everybody in the lottery for this amount. And then, if they draw out, they get to pick their blind as they draw out, and that's their spot for the year. And then, if they don't want in, they can have their money back and not, not take the blind if, you know, they don't want out. We'll, we'll, we'll look at some options.
But right now, we'll take no action on this.
Can you motion table?
I mean, we can table it if we'd like to, or can we just not take an action for right now and bring it back?
So, you motion to table or just table?
If we motion to table, is it automatic, or on the next meeting's agenda?
Or, or continue to the next meeting, we'll, we'll have it. We'll have it available by then, yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table it until the next meeting, and you further research before making a decision.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second, it's a roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Ruff.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
All right, item nine, consider authorizing the filling of vacant EMS dispatcher position.
We had a dispatcher decided to, she's got a position down in Oklahoma City, I believe.
So, this is the backfilling empty position?
Yes, to fill an empty position. Motion to approve a filling of vacant EMS dispatcher position.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Ruff.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Item ten, consider appointment of Simran Valley Engineering LLC with Matthew Ko as managing member as the city engineer. So, Matthew, would you like to give us the history on this, or?
Recently have branched out on my own and started my own firm. And I'm gonna be doing the same thing that I was doing with my former employer. And I just look forward to being able to, this is the city of Perry, in their day-to-day engineering needs, whatever that may be. Helping in emergency situations, small projects as they come up, planning stuff, review of complex engineering projects. Reviewing plans as they come in, just, I'm just here to supplement your staff and to assist them in their, in their daily tasks on this. And then, I'll still do, you know, construction projects, and we'll do, you know, agreements for larger projects that involve, you know, construction. I'm working on a master task order agreement, basically, where the meat of the, and potatoes of the contract are in one large document, and then when we need to do a project such as repairing water lines, or extending, extending a sewer main, a road job, or whatever it may be, we can just do a, a simplified agreement that, here's the, here's the scope, here's the cost, here's the schedule, and then we can just refer back to that master task order for the contractual obligations of all parties.
Matthew, how long have you been working with the city of Perry?
Going on two years now.
And he's, Matthew's helped oversee the, the water infrastructure improvements that we've been making over the last few years. And just the knowledge that Matthew has on our infrastructure and working with Vernon and with Willie Sheets, it's just important to keep that intact.
And not just that, the drainage issues to work out.
Right. Right. He's been a part of a number of different projects.
And duck hunting experience.
Well, we, we would suggest, you know, because we're gonna bring this to you sooner than later, and, and one is, is what Randy brought up, and that's the priorities with respect to water projects. That is something that, that I would like to see Matthew do. One, I mean, he's a hydrologist, so he's got his matters in hydrology. You know, we, we have been lucky in the past to always have an engineer that is a hydrologist. And, and that comes into great play with Perry Lake, McMertry, CC Lake, you know, that, that knowledge on items of hydrology. But, that, that's one of the tasks that I see coming to you quickly, and that is, you know, making that master list. And then the, the other project, and you don't have to make that decision. This decision here is just to hire him on, on an hourly basis. But, but the other one is the, is the sanitary sewer project that would go to the South Commercial Park. You know, that grant is there, and then we need to, we need to move on that. Because as soon as that gets built, we will, they have a park that, that we can, that we can market. So, those are kind of, to me, the two immediats that, that we will bring back. What, what this is, is pretty much a day-to-day, we have issues that come up from day-to-day on engineering, and we need to ask somebody who we know gives us good answers, so.
So, we would go away with the contract with Myers?
Oh, no, no. Oh, no, 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 Myers is, Myers is doing our railroad water project right now. And, and we can, we can decide to continue to, to contract with Myers on, on individual projects, you know. As you know, in the past few years, we've used Park Hill, we've used Cowan, we've used a number of, of different engineers. But, this is really getting back to the bling really for twenty years. And that is, we had a, we had an engineer, kind of a boutique, you know, engineer that, that served our needs, which I think really worked well. Particularly in the area of when we have a particular problem. Unlike other engineers who want to design something, Matthew knows the guy that can come in and fix it at, at a price that we're very happy with, you know. So, that, that's where I've really enjoyed working with him. It feels like we've got what we had for twenty years back, to me.
So, so we would be paying Matthew when we called him and needed him? There wouldn't be a monthly retainer or?
That's correct. Yes, and, and then, and then there would be, we would present tasks that you would consider. And one of them might be the, the priority on water projects, that report that, that we talked about. And, and the second would be a, the sanitary sewer project that's getting that sewer out to, out to the South Commercial Park. That's what I see coming to you very quickly, both of those.
So, so basically, what we're, what we're voting on is that we're gonna give Matthew priority, and he should be giving us priority too?
That's correct, that's correct. If, if you call me at, at two in the morning, I'm gonna answer the phone and say, what do you need? Let me get on the phone, let me call a contractor to come up here and get to work immediately on the water plant, or whatever it may be.
And he does.
Working on emergency situations as needed, or, we'd like you to come up here and give us your thoughts on this drainage issue at this local area we're needing. Just kind of all the card engineering as you need it, when you need it. Please, please help us review this development plans and, and see if we need to ask for some additional clarifications or guidance on these items. And some of those costs will be pass-through costs to the developers of subdivisions and things like that. This is just something that you would add on to, to, to those fees associated with getting a, a project permitted through the city. So, and if it's construction-related, like I carry professional liability insurance, and my insurance company will want a, a contract in place in those instances, and that's what the master task order agreement will do. And it'll clearly specify what those fees are going to be for those services, the timeline of those services, and clearly define the scope for projects as in repairing water lines, for instance, or a, a study at the water treatment plant that's very detailed. Some more complex processes, but just for general, everyday needs, you have me at your disposal when you need me. People that are, city employees are gonna go to my phone to bypass my sleep, my sleep mode at night. And so, if my phone rings at night, I'll, I'll wake up and answer it and be available.
All right, maybe I have any questions on that? The fee schedule is attached as well, if you needed to see that.
And is that, that's in line with what we've been paying, right? That, your fee schedule there?
I'm, I'm not going to discuss what Myers' fee schedule was compared to what my fee schedule is. That's not appropriate for me to discuss that. That's my fee schedule right there.
Make a motion to appoint Simran Valley Engineering with Matthew Ko as the managing member as our city engineer.
I'll second that.
Okay. Let's have a roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Ruff.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes. Thank you, Matthew.
Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, item eleven, new business. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm missing my time in the sun here. Whole reason I came was nothing official business, but Christie did a great job of ducking everybody at City Hall today. And she fled it out of the bag, the whole reason I signed up to speak. Happy birthday, Christie, from all of City Hall. We just adore the job you've been doing. And, yeah, thank you, Council, I'll get out of your hair now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we singing?
Are you singing?
I, you don't want that. If you don't want that, I sound like a deaf cat in a paper sack. You guys have a good one.
How about just a one, two, three, happy birthday?
All right, item twelve. Do it.
No, we don't do it.
Sure.
All right.
Are we singing or singing?
No, just saying.
Just saying. One, two, three.
Happy birthday, Christie.
Part of the minutes now.
That's right.
That's what you say.
Should we vote to approve her birthday? All right, item twelve, consider convenience executive session to discuss the appointment of a city manager per section three oh seven, three point one, Oklahoma statutes as amended.
So, I'm excited.
Let's go again.
Just put a name on one of them.
Marshall, Cold Iron, Cold Iron. Okay, Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Ruff.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthen.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Okay. We need a regular session. Item 14, consider approval of an agreement, an employment agreement with Nathan Reed as city manager of the City of Perry, Oklahoma. So in our exact session, we discussed the agreement. We've made some amendments to that. We've discussed that with Nathan Reed. So I would like to entertain a motion to approve the employment agreement as amended with Nathan Reed as our city manager for the City of Perry, Oklahoma.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Okay. So we will extend that to Nathan. And the date that he has provided to begin that is March 20th as the agreement. So that's just an announcement for everybody watching today that starting in March, we will have a new city manager and move from there.
Seven forty-eight.
Finally. All right, item 15.
So moved. Motion to adjourn.
There we go. Roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yes. All right, let's call a regular meeting of the Perry Municipal Authority from February 20, 2024 to order and have roll call when you're ready, Kristine.
Okay.
Coffee.
Here.
White. Marshall.
Here.
Davis. Cold Iron.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. All right, we have quorum. Item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, item four, consider approval of an employment agreement with Nathan Reed as trust manager of the Perry Municipal Authority.
So moved.
So it has to be with the amendments.
With the amendments to the employment agreement.
Second.
Okay.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item five, adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Set, one hour.
All right. Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Coldern.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, so this is our Perry Facilities Authority for February 20, 2024. It's called, it's meeting to order and have roll call when you're ready.
Okay, coffee.
Present.
White. Marshall.
Here.
Davis. Coldern.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. Item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Coldern.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy. Through me for a second.
Item four, consider approval of an employment agreement with Nathan Reed as trust manager of the Perry Facilities Authority.
I would move that we have approved the employment agreement with amendments.
Second.
Second.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Coldern.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item five.
So moved. Second.
Coffee.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Coldern.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.